Service every day, sometimes it's pretty tough. But I thought John Ed and Willie Spears wrote a book. It's all about service and the name of it's Bib or Apron. And that, and it's really the right thing for Montgomery today. And I appreciate it when y'all did it, John Ed, but you got on television. WSAF picked up on it, I saw that. And it was very positive for the city. So, thank you for being here, John Ed. Appreciate you tonight and appreciate everything you do for this city. So if you bring our prayer, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank all of you for being servants. And if the job's too low for you, then leadership's beyond you. And nothing is too little for any good leader to do. To wear a bib, what's in it for me? Or an apron, what can I do for you? And thank y'all for being the kind of community, for the mayor, for the city council, for what y'all do in leading. I appreciate that. Let us pray. Father, first I thank you for the privilege of living in Montgomery, Alabama. What a privilege. Thank you for the leaders that have been selected. Thank you for the staffs of this city. I pray for families. I pray that you would empower them and give them encouragement. Oh God, so many people are doing crazy stupid things. Just grant us an extra measure of dealing with that. And God, may we just learn to serve better. The greatest joy in life comes not when we are served, but we serve. And may we put on our bibs, take them off, may we put on our aprons, and may we wear them. Bless this meeting, bless everything that's done. I pray in the name of him who said he didn't come to be served, he came to serve. In his name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, John Ed. Please rise to the place of allegiance.
Council, I need a motion to approve the work session minutes for October the 19th.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have motioned to adopt, I'll favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion on the regular council minute minutes for the October 19th meeting.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
I'll favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mayor, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to be back with you. Was not able to be here at the last meeting, but had a productive meeting with our representatives on Capitol Hill. And just want to extend thank you to Senator Tuberville and Senator Shelby for their support of the city and many of the initiatives and priorities that we have here. And it's good to be able to kind of get their feedback and their guidance on things that we need to do in order to continue to help this city and this region grow. Also want to thank Congressman Mike Rogers and Congressman Terry Sewell for granting me the opportunity to speak with him. I think it was about this time almost exactly Congressman Sewell and I were talking about Highway 80 and selling Montgomery Trail and some ideas that she has for that, some initiatives that we hope to see carried out here for this community and for this part of her district. Was not able to see Congressman Moore, but hopefully we'll be able to do that next time. So, that said, I will get right to the executive summary and just kind of give a quick financial update before getting to the message of the day, which will be shortened to the point. The city of Montgomery is currently in the middle of its 13th accounting period to close the books for FY 2021. The external auditors have already begun the audit process in order to have financials ready to submit to the GFO no later than March 31, 2022. This will allow the city to qualify for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And it's something that we believe is very, very important. However, I do want to give you the highlights on four categories of revenue collections in the city for the month of October. First slide, please. Revenue from, revenue from sales and use tax increased more than 4% in October compared to October 2020. That is a positive sign, of course, the way we want to end the calendar year and start at the beginning of the fiscal year. What we're seeing is residents continuing to stimulate the economy by purchasing from our local restaurants, our home improvement stores and grocery stores, as well as online purchases. The online purchase piece is very important because as you all may have seen, we hosted the Big Ten Mayor's Conference here last week and we've got the lead municipalities here this week. Online sales is a very important initiative that is key to our revenue growth. Right now, there's a lot of concern that cities are not getting their fair share of online revenue growth. And I think it's going to be up to us as the largest municipalities in the state to really bring that formula to the forefront with the new finance director for the governor, as well as to the state legislature. It's very important that those online sales taxes be calculated in a way that truly funds cities the way that they should be and truly funds in an equitable way. When the formula was first established, there really wasn't a lot of interest and there wasn't a lot of thought into how online sales revenue would grow. Well, we all have found out during this pandemic that even for those who could not shop online have found a way to do so. Cities are not getting their fair share under the current formula. It's something that you'll be hearing from me a little bit more in the upcoming months. It will be probably coming to you for support as our council here in Montgomery, but also other city councils across the state to really support. And it's important because as we all know, cities are bearing the brunt of a lot of responsibilities now. The state has not done, whether it's cutting the grass, whether it's mental health support, many of the things that the state used to fund are now falling on local regional centers like Montgomery, Dothan, Huntsville, and so forth, Tuscaloosa as well. So we've got to keep that in mind and we'll be sharing more with you in these upcoming months prior to the next legislative session. Next slide, please. If we look at the lodging tax revenue, it has increased nearly 47%. This is tremendous for us when you consider the year-over-year growth and where we were last year versus where we look to go into the end of this calendar year. Local hotels have operated at a much higher room capacity than they were a year ago. We do not have enough quality hotel rooms in the city right now. We're leaving money on the table and we're turning down conferences from faith-based conferences to other organizational conferences, as well as corporate conferences. And so we have to kind of think about our long-term growth as it relates to the type of city that we are and the type of tourism that we have now, but also what we can have if we will look forward at some opportunities that are right before us. And so even with the economy coming back significantly year over year, we're still seeing that growth. And we are projected to see even stronger growth next year in the lodging tax. So we've got opportunity, but we also have a lot more potential that we've got to discuss how we maximize that. And not just downtown. I think there are corridors along I-65 that we can capitalize on in West Montgomery. And I think there's some other corridors in the city that we can utilize to connect them to the city and connect them to attractions. So we have to make sure that we're thinking not just in the here and now, but also beyond. Because when you're looking at conventions, we're already having to turn down conventions for 2023 because we don't have the space. And this is no affront to any of our neighboring communities, but people want to be in Montgomery. They want to be close to the convention center. They want to be close to the landmarks here and they, they want the transportation in and out and they really want to be able to just park and walk. So when we're thinking about conventions, they do these things three years out. So we've got to think from that standpoint to really put ourselves in position. And we'll see this number continue to grow. So again, good news there. I want to go now to the next slide and that's regarding the gasoline tax revenue. Now, this did decline in October, nearly 10% year-over-year. And this is attributable to less travel after September due to most summer vacations having ended and a lot of, you know, kids being back in school. We typically see this shift in the gasoline tax revenue during the months of October, November. And then we started to see it pick up again around the holiday months as people start to move around in November, December, all the way through the month of January. So this is not abnormal, but it is something that we wanted to make sure everyone took note of. Last slide, please. Here we have the alcoholic beverage tax. And again, revenue we saw decline in October by nearly 10% compared to FY 21. And we can only, you know, surmise that with the economy opening up as it is, that people are spending more of their time outside of their residences. They're getting back out, they're getting back to the restaurants, they're getting into some of the retail stores and they aren't, you know, buying as much and bringing it and consuming it at home. We also know that in terms of dollars, this is only about $25,000 in revenue that's not realized. So while it's not a significant number, it is a number that, you know, be it positive or negative, we want to show. We want to just try to give you and the public as much background as we can. It's also likely that as the holidays approach, the percentage growth in this revenue will become positive. And so we're going to look at that and we'll, we'll see kind of where the trends are as we finish the calendar year. Finally, the approved pay plan adjustment has been implemented and those increases were realized on October 22nd by all city employees. So we hope that everyone earned, enjoyed that the well-earned bump in their pay. And hopefully that'll be reflected in some more dollars that are spent with our local stores and retailers here in the community, in particular around the holidays. Additionally, as it now stands, it is anticipated that the city's fund balance of what one we call a savings account or our city reserves will increase significantly due to excess revenue over budget and the underspend from departmental operations. And so with that, that will conclude the executive summary. And I'll move right into some news that is not so good, unfortunately. But it's news that, that we need to cover. And I know it's news that our council has heard from many of their, their residents. And that is the news surrounding the violent crime and in particular, the gun-related crime in Montgomery. Unfortunately, nationwide, we have seen this trend tick up in, in most cities. And along with the Big Ten mayors that met here last week, we were discussing different ways that cities are trying to cope and cities are trying to, to deal with this. And there are a number of ideas and approaches. And I think that we're all looking at initiatives from wraparound services to the use of data and technology to try to partner with our schools and organizations and conflict resolution, to making sure that we try to restore a sense of hope and a sense of opportunity like John Ed was talking about in his prayer. We want to make sure that people know that there are things that we want to do for them and we want to try to connect them to those opportunities so they don't necessarily feel like there's nothing to lose when they make a decision or when they act on something that's emotional. That said, we are still continuing to see far too many shootings in our city. Far too many of them are perpetrated by people who know one another. There are people who are in some type of interaction with one another. And that's unfortunate because one life lost is certainly one too many. And, you know, from my standpoint, I think that we've got to really address this as a community. While we're standing up the office of violence prevention, I was just informed, something I probably should have known that the jobs have been posted. You know, that's not going to be all that we can do as it relates to this issue. We have to make sure that whether it's the city government or the faith-based organizations or those nonprofits and many of our community leaders who do this day in and day out, that we're working with them and listening to try to figure out what are some approaches that we can take that, you know, we haven't thought about? What are some things that we can support that we believe may be helpful in interrupting the trend of violence? And unfortunately, despite dealing with this increase, I do want to commend the men and women of Montgomery Police Department. Our police department has one of the best solvability rates in the nation. Right now, it stands at 77%. The national average is in the low 60s. And so I want to commend Chief Harris. I want to commend all the leadership and the rank and file and everyone with PD for doing so much in this time. And, and it's something that when we consider what happened just over the past weekend, where we had 11 shooters and unfortunately four, four lives lost, we've made arrests in all of, in those four murders. That's not going to bring the, the people back. That's not going to bring the joy back to those families that have lost a loved one. And so I want us to consider that we're going to need help and that we're going to need to call on all the partners in this process to help us. And so I'm calling on the judicial branch to do their part in this effort. It's important that our judges and our magistrates understand the difference between first-time offenders and repeat offenders. It's important that they understand the difference between violent offenders and non-violent offenders. We understand that the criminal justice system is imperfect and it needs work. And we need work at the local level and all the way throughout. But we can't over-correct things in this community and we can't have a bond system that continues to be broken. When the men and women of Montgomery Police Department are rearresting the same people over and over again, that's a problem. This is not somebody who is driving 45 in a 30 mile an hour zone. These are, these are people who unfortunately have fallen through the cracks and feel like there's no hope, there's no opportunity. And so therefore, they don't mind losing, they don't mind risking. Well, that, that's a problem for us when our magistrates and those that are charged to make decisions aren't holding up their end of the bargain. And when a bond for murder is set at $150,000, but someone arrested for drugs has a bond set at $200,000, that's a problem to me. That's out of whack. And we've got to figure out how we get that message across to the community that we don't want to lose any more lives. See, the fact that we have already matched the murders in 2020 by, by November the 2nd of this year is a, is a major issue. It's an issue that I welcome any type of partnership with law enforcement, with our judges. I welcome any ideas of what we can do better. But our police department is doing their job. Unfortunately, they're reacting to actions that have already happened. But we need the judges to do their part. We need the judges to make sure that they are following through. And if you have people who are repeat offenders, who repeat violent offenders, you cannot let them back out with these low bails. You've got to send a message. And it cannot be one is worried about the next election or one is worried about how someone may perceive their sentence. They have to do and think from the standpoint of the victim. Because what we're hearing is that part of the lack of community cooperation is because people who get arrested are right back out on the streets. And so if they're menacing, if they're intimidating those, then we're not going to get that cooperation. And so I really call on the, the judges to think about how they're approaching this, to think about maybe what we're seeing in some other communities where the bond is not $150,000. Where they don't mind putting a million dollar bond on your head. They don't mind putting a $5 million bond on you. We have to look at that for the people that are being arrested and rearrested. And we have to do our part to make sure that yes, they have a right to due process. But the people in this community and the people in these communities that are impacted by this the most have the right to have a peace of mind. And they have a right to feel like where they're going, day or night, they can be safe. And they don't have to worry about gunfire or gunfight breaking out because there are some disputes going on between people who've had these disputes going on for far too long. So to the degree that government can help, we want to help. To the degree that we can provide public-private partnerships, trust me, we're trying to do all of that. But until that time, we got to make sure we got the full participation and the full partnership of our judicial branch in this community. And that's not happening right now. Is that going to change someone from pulling the trigger the next time around? I don't know. But I do know that we've got to send a message that this type of violence is not going to be acceptable in this community. It's not sustainable in this community and it's not something that's healthy for anybody whether they're directly impacted by or they're indirectly impacted by because we all live with it and we all are impacted in some way, shape, form, or fashion. And it's been said, what hurts one hurts us all. And we've seen far too much of that in this community. So I just want to conclude by thanking the men and women of Montgomery Police Department for their work. Unfortunately, I wish we were talking more about police basketball leagues and community policing, some of the partnerships that are working. But right now, we've got to make sure that we call on those that are circling some of their responsibilities as it relates to how they set bond and what they do once we catch the bad actors in this community. And we need them to be involved. So I'll just stop right there and I'll end my comments, if you will, on that matter. And I'll get to the good news that, that does exist in Montgomery. And this will be it from me, Mr. President. And that's just our community hero. And I'll end on this for, for a good reason because I think it's important for us to recognize those people who are working every day in this community to make it better. And they aren't doing it for the pay, they aren't doing it because of the position or the platform. They're just doing it because of the purpose. And so we're honored to have with us July 2021's Community Hero, Brooke Freeman, founder of Beauty by Fire Ministries. And I'd like to welcome Montgomery Advertiser Executive Editor Paige Windsor to share more information about our hero this evening. Come right up. Thank you.
This is my favorite part of the job. The Montgomery Advertisers Community Hero Program, sponsored by the Beasley Allen Law Firm, celebrates the good works of extraordinary people in and around our community. Tonight, we are honoring Brooke Freeman, founder of the nonprofit Beauty by Fire Ministries. It's a ministry born of the loss of a husband and father, one born of a woman's heart and her faith. Beauty by Fire Ministries is dedicated to helping hundreds of widows throughout the river region. Here's what Brooke had to say about the ministry's main purpose. "It is our privilege and our desire to come alongside and lighten some of the loads that crowd Jesus out. And at the end of the day, if we can take one to two things off of her or help in a small way so that she can experience Jesus more fully, then I feel we are walking in our purpose." The ministry today is rooted in an organized network of about 300 women that walk alongside one another as fellow widows. Because of the many partnerships that Brooke has established, they are receiving support both emotionally and practically. Because of the selflessness she has shown in her dedication in the caring of widows, Brooke Freeman is our community hero. So first, thank y'all for all that you do. Your service to our community is definitely sacrificial and appreciated. Secondly, thank you for this honor. I was a little surprised by the honor, to be honest. Some of our widows nominated me and I didn't know about it until the article was published that that was what it was for. So I'm very humbled to receive this, but not just for, for me and the ministry. My family, part of them, my son had to dart off to, to practice. But my family sacrifices regularly alongside me as we serve our community. And, and we have countless volunteers in churches, other organizations, local businesses, and individuals that enable us to do what we do on a daily basis. And there is not a single thing that we do on our own. This, this award goes to the countless men and women in our community that serve one another. And it's just my privilege to represent them here today. So thank y'all very much.
Hey Mayor, good report, man. We do need those judges, we do need those judges to get on the table.
Hey Mayor, Harvick talked yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sir, why are we on this, back on the best, Chief? I like the, how many calls have been made to those motels on Monticello where the two murders were made this weekend? I've been conversating with the people in the neighborhood, they're saying there's police cars there all the time. And if we got a problem in those motels, we need to go ahead and fix it. They probably, they might need to close up for a while.
Give me just a second, I'll see if I can pull that up real quick.
Why don't you just get it for us because it may be the next meeting we have. I want to send a message. We don't want to put that, we don't want that mess there. If they're going to, if, when I gather you had enough police cars going there a good bit, there's some problems in that motel. We've, we've had a murder there about a year ago that the woman was drugged off and dropped somewhere else. And, and now you got two in there now and we need to clean it up. I mean, if y'all have been worked real hard there, then we need to eliminate your problem.
Yes, sir.
And I'm here to eliminate your problem. So if we have to take his license or whatever we got to do to close him up, if he can't clean it up, we can. Okay? I know the mayor is upset with this stuff. I mean, the judges are not locking these folks up. We need, if we have to close the business up, we'll close the business up. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Give us that information to the council so we'll know what's happening over there. Because if you've got that many calls, we worry about bars and, and things like that. We ain't worried about motels, but that's probably, you got a big problem over there too?
Yes, sir.
And the panhandlers are sitting in there in that same motel, the panhandlers are in there too, living in there and they're not by any ways poor.
They're not contributing to Montgomery.
So we need to clean it up, okay?
Yes, sir.
If you give us the data, we'd, we'd be very nice, I'd appreciate it.
Hey, Mr. President, Chief, before you leave, calls for services also on the, it's one on the Carmichael Road. I think it's right there in the area where we tore down the old.
It used to, it's, it's listed as super eight, but it's actually something else.
Budgetdale Land?
Yeah, get off, we can close them all up.
And I have a question and it may not be for Chief Harris. Charlie, I went by there today just to look at them. I spoke to a police officer that actually spends three to four times a day calls to this one particular hotel on Carmichael. In our business license process, when they get a business license for a hotel, is there a short-term stay and a long-term stay business? Because what a lot of these people are doing are actually living in them. They actually pulled a lady out with 80 cats in one of those rooms. 80.
80 cats.
80 cats. And on her driver's license was listed, the hotel is her address, her home address. So is there a difference in our business license process, Mayor? That you may know where the business license department, is there a short-term stay and a long-term stay?
There's no license people back there.
And we need to change it if it's not.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Um, there's not a difference in the licensing. The hotel is licensed based on its gross receipts. Now, they do have procedures where they have tenants that actually can have short-term stays. But there are some that actually live in there on a continuous basis.
Do we ever audit, do we ever audit these places? Because there's one particular one on Carmichael.
We do audit them.
I think only accepts cash. I think only accepts cash?
Sir?
The one on Carmichael that we're talking about that's in question only accepts cash?
We do conduct audits on hotels. And we can set that one up for audit.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt, and Mr. President, if I can address that, that, two things. We are benchmarking, uh, what against some other cities and best practices they're utilizing for, uh, hotels, because we know that has been, that Carmichael Road area has been a, uh, problem area for a number of years. We know there are also certain owners, uh, of these hotels that are a problem, and no different than you all did with the clubs. Uh, expressed this, Chief, that I believe the same thing needs to be done, uh, with the hotels. And I agree with, uh, President Jim Wright on, on the very thing, that if we need to take some licenses, we should. So we're looking at what some other cities do, because what you will find is that, um, some cities don't allow this ownership, and they don't allow certain hotels to operate the way another municipality may. And a lot of that is in, not only the business license process, but it's in also how those, uh, inspections are done and how often they are done. And so we're looking into those areas.
And that's one of the things I talked to Mr. Hodge about today, Councilman Calhoun and I did many, many years ago. We went through numerous hotels in inspections Department on the West Side. There's probably four or five hotels that we went to. Everything from leaky faucets to fire alarms and, you know, that's some of the things I think we could be proactive on.
I agree.
And then we would have found those 80 cats in there ourselves.
That'd be bad.
We would like, we would like to also add, that's a way in which some of these motels are abating their responsibility to pay lodging tax.
Well, bring it to us.
Under state law, anything from zero to 179 days is considered to be lodging, uh, constitutes lodging tax. So as these motels permit people to stay longer than that on a continuous basis, then they're abating lodging taxes. So it's really something that needs to be looked at.
Do we need to, we need to change the ordinance, we'll change it.
We'll fix it.
Okay.
Because we want, we want to help you get your job done, okay?
Hey, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to wait two weeks to see the numbers? Or do you want to have them go ahead and come and get the numbers when they're here? Because we know there's an issue there.
I don't know who to, who to call on right now. I don't know which one, certainly the eight I know, but I don't know what the other.
I do.
Mr. President, let's just ask Ms. Blaylock to just go ahead and send a letter. And once we get the information, we'll have them already scheduled for two weeks, and we can deal with this instead of waiting. It'd be sooner than later.
Sooner the quicker, sooner the better.
I'll get the exact, I'll get the exact hotel.
Get the exact stuff, give it to...
I will, and then if he ends up, we'll do it, and I'll get...
Have them come here on the, the next meeting.
So there are two different locations, one in Monticello and one on Carmichael.
At least two, maybe three.
Part, um, November 16th.
Let's check their, let's check their tree. Okay?
You want them to be here for the 16th meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this going to be a show cause or just a review?
Show cause.
If we do a show cause, we've got to give the reason, and we've got to give them at least 10, 10 days' notice.
Just do a, I don't know if you show cause or just...
We don't have enough calls for service, trust me.
I know that, yeah.
I don't think we can get the information quick enough to get a certified letter, because I have to send them a certified letter.
That's just the, that's just the easy way to get them in front of us.
Just here for a review regarding safety procedures.
We want to make sure they understand we're not going to put up with them. That's all we want to do.
And at that point, then you can turn it into calling back for a show cause.
There you go. Okay. Let's get them here, best, best way possible. Okay. Item number one, Tommy?
I need to read it first, Mr. President.
Okay.
Hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one lot located at 450 Ann Street from an O1 District to a B2 District.
Ms. Jones, you're here for that? Okay. Are you, Ms., are you Kimberly Jones?
Yes, it is.
Give us your, you need to say that to the, so we'll record that. Your name, please?
Kimberly Jones.
Okay. All right, Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property for a beauty salon.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak against this item, please come forward. Kimberly, you own the property, so you're, I'm gonna see if anybody wants to talk against you, okay? Anybody who'd like to speak against this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, if that public hearing's been held. Now, Kimberly, tell me what you're gonna do with your property?
Um, I'm gonna turn into a beauty salon.
Okay. And this was approved by the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, council, you got any questions? I need a motion to adopt.
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Good luck.
Good luck with your business, ma'am.
Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one parcel of land containing .96 acres, uh, east side of Wetumpka Highway and north of Motley Drive from an Ag 2 District to a B2 District.
Representative, item number two. Okay. Tommy, tell us.
Mr. President, the, uh, planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property. It's an adjacent lot, and they want us to expand their business storage.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, if that public hearing's been held, talk for the council. Any motion, council? District two, is this close to you? No, it's District four. Sorry.
County Commission for Police, PJ.
Oh, I'm from PJ. Oh, that's right. County Commission for, Brandon, this year's, yeah. All right, in motion?
Brandon, you gonna give a motion?
Motion, you can give. I have most, no, motion or adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Item number three?
Hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one lot located at 2 Dunn Drive from an R60 S District to a B2 District.
Before we have, uh, Mr., your name for the record, sir?
Uh, Jerry, Jerry Kaiser.
Oh, you remember, okay.
This, uh, this particular property right here, I think you might be familiar with it. We own all the property now from Ann Street all the way down to this particular property there on Dunn Drive. All the rest of the property is on B2 already and has been quite, quite a few years. This particular house is, um, is uninhabitable right now, and, uh, the lady that owns it, I, I, really, we don't need it for our particular proposed development, but it certainly would be advantageous down the road. So we are agreeing to buy the, the property from her. And it is on the corner of Dunn Drive, and it is, uh, all the rest of the property going all the way back to wet, to Ann Street is already zone B2, all the way down to, uh, to, uh, Lee High School. And, uh, one other disadvantage to the, to the residential aspect of this is the drawings for the new proposal to extend Ann Street to connect in the Federal Drive. They're rerouting all the buses around Lee High School and so forth. They will be coming out in Bruton Street and, uh, in addition to coming out to the new street that's going to connect to Federal, Federal Drive. So we're making a request to get this property rezoned to blend with the rest of the property.
Tommy, I think he's, uh, told your story.
Yes, sir. Planning Commission recommended the rezoning.
I got you. Okay.
Don't want to carry it over.
Oh, it probably ought to. Now, I need a motion to adopt. Hey, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. I need a public hearing, please. This, this, this is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, if that public hearing's been held, talk for the council, need a motion. All motion, adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Mr. McKenna and Mr. Pruitt, unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Good luck, Ms. Cadda.
Thank you very much. We have one other piece of this particular, it's a little bit misleading, it's requesting a 39-acre rezoning. This property is, uh, is one that joins the 280...
Let her read it, let her read it first.
288 acres that the inland port's purchasing. And the only thing that's not rezoned right now is six lots.
Let her read it, let her read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item number four, hearing on proposed ordinance rezon, rezoning two parcels of land containing 39 acres located south side of Burnsdale Drive, west of Mobile Highway from an M1 and R75M District to an M1 District.
Okay. Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property for an intermodal facility.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, if that public hearing's been held. Mr. Cadda, you want to say anything?
Thank you very much.
All right, need a motion? I want to be holding, Mr. Cadda. All right, I need a motion. It's, it's in, I'll... Okay, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Yeah, done, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadda.
Item five, resolution adopting the 2022, 2025 Montgomery Fire Rescue Strategic Plan and acknowledging the 2021 Fire Rescue Community Risk Assessment and Standards of Cover.
Come on forward, chief, and we'll see if there's any questions, if anybody. Chiefs are here, and council, you have any questions for the chief? I need a motion to adopt?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Great presentation earlier. Very professional. Thank you.
Item six, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only doing business as Twain Curve at 441 Twain Curve.
All right. Representative here of, uh, Twain Curve Corporation. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Warren Patel.
Okay, Mr. Patel. We had the public hearing last time. Council, you have any questions, Mr. Patel? And this is in whose district?
Brandon Line.
Mr. Lines, you got any questions? Mr. Lines, you got any question? Okay. Need a motion to adopt? All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Item seven, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate located at 541 M Street to Daquan Lee.
Okay. Item number seven, 1800, any questions on this one? Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
On item seven, all in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Okay.
Item eight, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate located at 1604 Rosa L Parks Avenue to Stanley Tally.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Motion.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item nine, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate located at 318 Auburn Street to Al Andrea Bell McCall.
Motion to, uh, suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution, ordinance is adopted. Item 10, resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Aldott for resurfacing and planning of Westport Boulevard.
Need a motion to suspend rules?
Ms. Brandon?
Ms. Brandon, it's your deal. All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 11, resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Aldott for additional turn lanes and traffic signals on Maxwell Boulevard.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 12, resolution adopting the East Alabama Regional Division D Phase Two Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay. Need a motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Need a doc, motion to adopt?
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 13, resolution approving, approving the issuance of a business license to Gregory Thomas Doing Business as Quality Without Question, 2326 West Fairview Avenue.
Okay, who's got, who's, this is, Mr. Thomas, you here? Yes, sir, I see. I understand everything's in order.
We would like to make one recommendation.
Yes?
Uh, this is a condition of licensure. From my understanding, one of our field representatives have indicated that, um, the taxpayer has signage that indicates that the business is a studio and a car wash. And it came in several years ago and had studio removed from the license. So we would like for, um, them to remove studio from the signage on the building.
Okay, you hear the request?
Yes, sir.
Hand?
Yes, ma'am.
You would do, you're gonna reduce this, you're gonna remove, remove the studio from it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because you will just be a car wash, right?
Yes, just a car wash.
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion to suspend rules for this?
Move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Go over your business.
Item 14 and 15 have been withdrawn. Item 16, resolution reappointing George Chapman to the Water and Sewer Board.
Need a motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules?
On, all the way down, rest of the agenda. Okay? Is that okay?
Yeah.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
All right. Number 16, I need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 17, resolution reappointing Ray Roten to the Water and Sewer Board.
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanim, unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 18, resolution reappointing Willie Durham to the Housing Authority.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. 19, resolution reappointing J. Scott Harris to the Water and Sewer Board.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. 20, resolution reappointing Susan Price to the Museum Board.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 21, appeal of demolition of 1517 West Street by Keith and Bridget Osburn.
Is Keith and Bridget Osburn here? Have you already taken care of that, Mr. Brandon? Okay. Are they here? Item number 21.
Which, as I stated, we'll continue to work with them. We would just ask that you deny their appeal this evening.
Okay.
And we'll just continue to work and make contact along the way.
Okay, they're not here? Okay. Need a motion to deny?
Mr. President, a motion to deny?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Would you hand it, put your hands up, please? Eight, are you abstaining or...?
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain.
Eight with one abstention. The denial is upheld. Item 22, appeal of demolition of 4062 Oak Street by Bob Fine.
Bob Fine here, please? Mr. Bob Fine? This one's the same way, we are...
Same thing.
Same thing denied. Okay. Need a motion to deny?
Mr. President, move to deny?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, appeal is upheld. Item 23, pursuant to Section 1153B1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of Item 23, pursuant to Section 1153B1 Code of Alabama Authorization of Demolition of Unsafe Structures at the Listed Locations.
Okay. Need motions to adopt?
Anybody here?
Yes, can we ask if anybody here about these before?
Anybody here about, about these two demolitions? I don't have anybody signed up for that.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Just need to, just need to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous. Item 24, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures on various locations.
Somebody here wants to talk about 24?
Yeah, Mr. Milner Ministries?
Oh. Yes, sir, your name?
I'm Pastor Milner.
Okay, Mr. Pastor. And you got an issue with what?
Pardon, I didn't hear you.
What, what you got on number four? Milner Ministry?
The address is 4059 South Court Street.
Okay, Brandon, and when you, and you're, have we already?
What we got?
The, the structure's been demolished. Uh, I believe Mr. Milner's issue's gonna be with the grading. We initially approved the grading of the lot after the demolition. Since then, it has rained and, uh, the dirt did settle, creating a slight depression that is holding a little bit of water. Um, and we have had the contractor, he will be going back to, to add another load of dirt to even up, to bring the grade up.
Okay.
Is that the reason why it's 4200? We're paying for that?
No, that's, that's actually a couple hundred dollars below the average cost of the demolition.
Okay, so this 42 is just for the tearing down of the structure?
Yes, ma'am. But the, the, the additional dirt that he's gonna bring in is gonna be, no additional cost.
Oh, no cost?
No.
Okay. All right.
Okay, um, Mr. President and council, um, I'm not here about that. Um, I'm here that, as a pastor, we are a church and we are a 501(c)(3) ministry. We are a member with, uh, ADC, I mean, A-D-E-C-A. Uh, also, and, uh, we are clear to do, um, not only church, but we can do community help fairs, counseling, uh, youth at risk, assisted living, elderly care, summer enrichment, et cetera. Um, this piece of property is right next door to our church and we've been upkeeping it, but because of the pandemic, we, uh, fell behind financially and was not able to meet city requirements to keep it up. And, um, it was torn down. We have no problem with that, it's just the 4200, we come to appeal to the council to, uh, waive that for us. We are in the community and we're trying to do good in the community. If you ride by there and you see the amount of, um, improvements we've been able to do since we've been there.
Thank you, Clay.
Hey, Clay, is it your district? Have you seen the property?
No.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, you got?
Dan, Clay.
Brandon, y'all got any comments on this?
Sir, uh, the cost of construct, the, the cost of demolition has been absorbed by the taxpayers and if, uh, Mr. Milner's 501(c)(3), then, uh, he won't be paying taxes on, on this at any time anyway. It would only be on a future sale, which that would recoup from the taxpayers.
So, it's a, it's a lien on the property now, is what you're talking about?
I don't know if the lien has been placed at this time, but, uh-
It would be.
E- even if it would be, it would be a tax type lien.
So, it, it would be there forever, as long as they held on to it? So, they wouldn't have to pay the bill?
Only at the point of sale.
When they sold it, they could pay the bill? Okay.
Yeah, we, that's clear to us, but we are a ministry, uh, church and 501(c)(3) ministry and we just come here to ask for, to waive that so we can continue to do ministry there. And, uh, we intend to do community help fairs and counseling, uh, youth at risk, assisted living, elderly care, summer enrichment, just a number of things that we are already clear to do. And, uh, because of the pandemic and, uh, we just fell off financially and we were not able to make the improvements on time.
How much did you pay for the property to begin with? How much you have invested in that property?
Somewhere around a thousand dollars, but we've been keeping it up, the lawn.
Well, let me ask this question, how long have you had the property?
We've had the property somewhere around five years.
Well, I guess my point is, if you ever sold it, it would be a cost to the buyer.
Okay, we don't, we don't intend to sell it, we would-
Well, it'll never be, it'll never be an issue because, uh, would it be an issue when taxes, he's a nonprofit, so he didn't need, he didn't pay taxes on either?
It would not. And if he ever wanted to enhance the property and that, uh, lien impeded the, his ability to enhance the property, then I would welcome him to come back to y'all at that time.
Okay, got you. Right now, I said-
But, Mr. President, even with the lien, I mean, he's asking to use the property. This lien is not stopping you from using the property to do whatever you're saying you wanna do there. It's just if you want to resell the property, we have to recoup the 4200 that we had to pay to get it demolished. So, that, that will always be there and the lien will be there on that property. If you decide to sell it, if you decide to build something on it, you know, hopefully depending would enhance you that you get the money, the 4200 to build. But, you know, we had to tear down because it was a obstacle in the structure, you know, you get the complaints and I understand that. So, we're in a 50/50 catch situation where the community is complaining about the looks of it and I understand what you're trying to do within the community, but the taxpayers gonna absorb this 4200 that we have to recoup. But we're not saying that you can't use the property to do fairs or whatever you need to do there, it's still there for you to use.
Okay. Thank you.
You'll never have to worry about the money, Matt.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is, my name is Bob Lucas and, um, I'm a frequent visitor of Pastor Milner's ministry. Pastor Milner's ministry is a 20-year, uh, work in progress. Uh, he have done with this ministry significant improvements on that corner. I would, uh, suggest that his lawn and the lots around that particular business, uh, that ministry is the best-kept properties, uh, in that particular area. So, it, it's, it's, um, it's a contribution in a sense to that community, what he do over there. Uh, the people that he, he serve over there is underprivileged, underfunded, um, constantly, um, going through financial issues. And he opened the doors to them, um, with no, no, uh, strings attached, uh, they can come in, uh, they can learn about faith, they can learn about family, and they can learn about, uh, friendship. And those are the three essential things that we need, uh, to, to change this city. I heard, uh, Mr. Genright in a recent interview says that friends was killing friends, uh, due to one of these recent incidents. People that know each other are killing, uh, each other, but these are not people of faith. Uh, this ministry is producing people of faith, uh, that understand what family and friendship is all about. And I think that it's worthy of the city, uh, partnering with it in a sense, uh, to, uh, forgive that debt, not just leave it lingering, um, but to forgive it because traditionally when properties, uh, have those kinds of liens, in a year or two, they go to the tax sale and they're offered for sale again. So, it could somewhat hinder future progress and he have every intention of adding it as a parking lot because the space that he is now developing, um, have a very small parking lot and when people come and visit, you need space to keep them off the road. And with the recent improvement of the, the roads over there, uh, one of the lots that he had been maintaining for almost 20 years and using as parking space, they curved it in. So, they actually took away, uh, that particular lot that he was using, uh, for overflow and parking. So, I, I think it would really be, um, a good investment for the city to, uh, clear this lien, um, by way of forgiving this debt now so that the church would own this property outright. Um, I know that the city have been pushing initiatives to, to mow and on. Uh, he have done this, um, he have kept it up.
We just don't wanna set a precedent, sir.
I'm sorry?
We set a precedence on these things, then you, then everybody lines up and do the same thing. So, I mean, I understand what, how good a job he's done and what he's done in the community, we just gotta make sure we don't set a precedence. And, and that's what's, that's what holds us up right now.
Yeah.
Because if, 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 you, you're one, you're one church, but how many would be behind you if we set the precedence, okay?
Well, this is not, not new. Um, there are some properties that were sold on the tax sale some years ago on Rotary Street and a young individual that purchased them down in that area, uh, he had some of the debt forgiven, uh, on those properties, uh, that he, he purchased over there. And I know him, I know him personally.
Well, we, we can research that, but I don't know that we did that, but-
No, we haven't needed that money.
We didn't do that.
They probably stayed.
We had another guy last week come and want the same thing and we didn't do it for him. So, I'm telling you, you're not, it, it, we, we feel your pain, but you're okay the way you run your operation now. That's, that's not a real issue for y'all to be able to, to use that property as you want to. But it's a real, uh, issue for us because other people have the same issue and if we give one, we gotta, we're gonna set a precedence. So, I, I, I'm afraid to do it for you, knowing what it may be, an avalanche coming with other people want the same thing.
And I, I have a question, do it bill interest? Like, will that amount that he owed at 4200, will it go, so it's never gonna change from the 4200?
And, and the only relief I'm aware of that we've ever offered would, would have been for state tax sale properties that were purchased and the only relief we offered were administrative fees, not the actual expenditure for the work that was performed. And in the case of a demolition, the lien is the exact amount of the expenditure to the contractor with no additional fees or charges included.
They move on.
Okay. Anybody got any other discussion on this issue? Okay.
I, I have one other.
Yes, sir, Mr. Milner.
Will the property come up for tax sale?
It's, it's not a tax lien.
No, it's not. It's not, there's no tax lien on it.
It's just for the demolition of the property.
You own the property and you, and it's got a, it's got a fee against it, but it will never, you'll never come back.
According to this letter I have right here, it says that it can be sold right here.
The state law does allow a municipality to attempt to take ownership unless they've adopted a more reasonable means. Our more reasonable means is simply the lien filed against a parcel of land and then we turn it over for collection. We've recorded it probate and it gets turned over to collection by the revenue department. But again, it's, it's not a tax encumbering lien, it is just against that parcel of land.
But when that is collected, it's owned by the person that pays that.
Not collected for, for your 501(c)(3).
Yeah, you, you're protected.
Whoever, whoever buys becomes the owner, but I can no longer do ministry.
I don't think so. I don't think he can. He can't, it's not, you're protected by the law and not, not the nonprofit.
I mean, think anybody who paid 4200 for the property that's sitting on it. But they're sitting on the church.
Okay. All right. I don't see, anybody got any issues here? I'm sorry, we can't, we might have to hold, okay? Thank you, sorry.
Thank you for, you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion on 24, please. Need a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Number 25.
Resolution declaring, authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Need a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Four, three and four, are you abstaining?
Did we ask it in about a minute? Was this hard to?
No, 25, there was nobody on 25, we already knew about this.
Unanimous.
And nobody signed it. Unanimous, okay?
Unanimous, yes. And council, I have put before you contingency funds. Uh, these have been approved by the mayor for District 7, 500 to MPS for Belling, Belling Grath Middle School and for District 8, 1,000 to Hateless Foundation and 1,650 to Carriage Hills Neighborhood Association.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question.
All right.
I requested some funds at the last council meeting for the, uh, Candy Christmas with MPD for the Jabari-
Yes, sir. They'll, they'll come out Friday.
Oh, Friday?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all of us did.
They said the check machine was down or something, right?
I hadn't heard that. They just, I, I was told that the checks would run Friday. I don't know anything different than that.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, um, District 6?
Yes, sir.
Motherly Care, $1,000.
1,000?
Brandon Lyons.
Motherly Care?
Yes.
Did you check that one on the list?
Yeah, Randy sent me an email.
I don't see it on the list. Is it, is it something new that you've given to Randy recently?
Yeah, he just, they just, they just called and Randy got it cleared.
Um-
Okay. He has not updated my list, so, uh, the mayor will just have to approve it's subject to the correct paperwork being provided. If it's not provided, then we won't cut the check. So, it came with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, District 3, 150 dollars to River Region Generals.
River Region Generals?
River Region Generals, mhm.
Okay.
And, uh, 950 dollars to Old Cloverdale Association.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, District 4. Let me do, I need to do 2,500 to, uh, Carver Baseball Team, Carver High.
Okay, well, you'll go to MPS for Carver, Carver Baseball Team.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Let me do that. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Clay, what you gonna do with Jeff Davis?
Next.
Let me give, um, 500 dollars to Old Cloverdale Association.
I'll match you. Okay, we'll do that with you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, and let me give 1,500 to Greater Washington Park.
Neighborhood Association.
I didn't know they had one. Are they 501(c)(3)?
Yeah, we are.
That's it.
Anybody else? Need a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Okay. We have one person, two people want to speak to us. Michelle Krosky? Michelle Krosky?
Actually, there's two.
I got you, I got, I got one more.